Big call, Lennox County Superior Trustee's regular meeting, Monday, May 7, 2012. It's under order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Any deletions, additions? I would myself like to add, under new business, letter "I," reallocation of CDVG funds. And if anybody has anything else.
I still haven't received anything about the hours of operation, so did you want to table that right off the bat? I don't know if anybody else has received information.
I don't think there's anything really to receive, other than us just deciding we want to go back to normal.
Sir Med was making up an analysis? I haven't seen that.
I'd like to leave it in, if anybody has objection to it.
I just figured if we're going to talk about it, it's maybe a deal information.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of eighteen, I, reallocation of CDVG funds.
Motion by Trustee Paisley, supported by Clerk Keith. Other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments? Sir?
Yes, my name is Joe Moreno.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I've just got a few comments. At the last meeting, I did not question your fiscal responsibility. I was referring to your community involvement. The gentleman that did praise you for your fiscal responsibility prompted me to do a little research. Was it fiscally responsible to vote in favor of a sewer project on Grashad Avenue that is costing this township in excess of $1 million annually for the less than 20 customers that it serves? Or was it fiscally responsible to spend $500,000 on five acres of farmland? Or was it fiscally responsible to approve the construction of a multimillion dollar building, place it on the grossly overpaid property, only to find out you can't afford the electric bill? Or was it fiscal responsibility to spend $6,000 on an office Christmas party? That was all in the past, and that was all before Ron Trautling took office. Is it fiscally responsible to allow a incompetent assessing department to continue one more month? I don't think fiscal responsibility is their strong suit here. I would like to compliment them, though, on their departmental camaraderie. One final comment. I would like the opportunity to debate my opponent in the upcoming election on these issues. Thank you.
Public comment?
I see that under unfinished business, we have going to New Haven Community Festival again. If you're so fired up to give money, to give our tax money to something, I have to agree with what Mr. Iann told us at the last meeting. Let's give it to the food being, or let's feed some people, instead of blowing it on 15 minutes of fireworks that are over and done.
Do you want a public count? Sir?
My name is Chuck Jones. I'm a project manager for the New Haven Fountain Project, and my assistant is Mr. Peter Gunn. We're here to solicit Lennox's attention and help in promoting this fountain being built in New Haven. Yes, we're looking for donations for payers, but more importantly, we're asking your help in bridging the communications gap that may exist between Lennox and New Haven. We need the families to be able to receive these donation forms, but more importantly, the fountain is not just a fountain. It is symbolic of New Haven turning the page and being able to come together to work towards a common good. We want you to recognize that whatever makes New Haven look good also makes Lennox look good. We want you to recognize that whatever new growth is in New Haven also represents new growth in Lennox. I have the feeling that if you change the way you think about things, the things that you think about will change. I'm asking you, every one of you, to change the way that you think about New Haven.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Mike Miller. I have been back in this building since January of 2010, when I was invited to come in and interview for an assessing job in the department. I had kind of forgotten about it. I wasn't hired. Life isn't fair. Some people get hired, some people don't. And then about a month ago, I guess there was an article in the local paper talking about the turmoil in the assessor's office. And then I went online and read your comments, the board's comments, about the special meeting you had on February 10 of 2011, that I, of course, I wasn't invited to. And if somebody, if what was said was true about me in these comments, I wouldn't have been hired. I wouldn't want to hire you. And I was looking at these comments for a couple of weeks now, and I thought I would get over it, but I felt like I had been libeled and defamed at a board meeting and knew nothing about it until now, until, like I said, about a month ago. I was asked to come in and be interviewed by the board for that assessor's job. I have a Level III assessing license in the state of Michigan. There's only one higher, a Level IV, and I have a Certified General Assessing License. You can't get a higher license in the state for an assessing job, so I have both an appraiser, excuse me, appraiser license and an assessing license. I was willing to come in and work at the Level I pay because it fit my lifestyle, and I thought it would be, what an overused phrase, a win-win. I would have been bringing my appraiser experience and my assessing experience here. I was willing to work at the bottom part of the pay scale, and in fact, there was an agreement reached on that pending board approval, which I had assumed, silly me, was a formality. So when I saw these comments in the comments, this is the chief assessor. He was on the web at that Apex class just playing online. He had the nerve to do this alongside the state tax commissioner. If he was with a unit, that unit would have been running up so fast their heads would be spinning. I am not part of a unit. I go to these classes to continue my assessing license on my own dime. So all of a sudden here, I'm causing all kinds of ruckus, and I would have been reported. And then when he went to the MTT class, he sat right in the back of me and he talked through the whole class. I remember at that MTT class, we talked, because it was after I had been assumed I'd be taking this position here. There's other comments in here, and we don't have all evening. But there were other comments in here from, in fact, some other people were invited, including Sandy Burkishaw, who works in equalization at the county. So you could look at me and think that I'm just complaining, I didn't get the job. Okay, well, Macoma Assessor's Organization has a six-hour class in June. Right now, there are two people teaching that six-hour class.
Monday, April 2.
Sandy Burkishaw asked me to teach the class.
Just for April 2, motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Treasurer Hattenbacher.
I am registered with the state to teach the class, so make up your mind. I mean, I'm just troubled by that. Oh, and by the way, I was a library trustee for 13 years. I know how board meetings work. If this had happened at our library board meeting, we would have said, we'll table
Any other questions?
this until we can have those people here to defend this.
All those in favor? Aye.
That's a different story.
Opposed?
Thank you for your time.
Motion carries. 4:25. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of 4:25.
Any other public count? Count at this time? Motion by Trustee Paisley, supported by Treasurer Hattenbacher. Approval of minutes, 4:25, 2012. Other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining. Number five, mid-month business. Any questions regarding the advertisement?
Just have we had a great sponsor?
I think KM said he's already gotten some in.
And just for the record, in the minutes, the mid-month business was in regards to placing any for seasonal grounds maintenance personnel.
Any other questions regarding that? There is no sheriff's report at this time. Fire Department report, Chief?
Evening, everyone. I've just got a couple items. You've got my report for the month to receive and file. Just a couple items, and this is not just for the board, for the entire audience. The first Saturday of the month, Lennox Township Fire Department, in conjunction with the Port Huron Fire Department, held a joint training, trench rescue training exercise in Port Huron. And by the end of the morning, you would have thought these two departments have been working together for 20 years. The cooperation and camaraderie was unbelievable, and we are the only team available to Port Huron for a backup team that's in Lennox Township. There's not another single department in all of St. Clair County that can do technical rescues. So we're going to continue to do some joint training exercises in the future. Talking about trench, the fire department held our annual trench rescue with fresher along with several members of Richmond Lennox EMS, and that was highly successful. And a big public thank you to Mark Hattenbacher. I know Mark's not here tonight, to the whole family. Mark provided the equipment and all his own time to come down and dig the trench down at the station, so we have that available for our training. Two other items, real quickly. About two months ago, I applied for a grant through the Enbridge Corporation. They're the ones that do underground piping internationally, Canada, Mexico, United States, for natural gas and oil. And very happy to announce that we did receive a grant through them to purchase new extrication gloves for all of our personnel. So it was a small grant, but it was a very, very well worthwhile grant. And my last item is, is on grants. Currently, the township, we have five tornado sites in the township, and we need approximately five more tornado sirens to have 100% coverage. So there is some money available through the state, through state grant funding, so I did apply for a grant in the amount of $120,000 on behalf of the township for tornado sirens to give us 100% coverage. Don't know if we'll get it, but you can't be denied if you don't ask. So that concludes my report, unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Chief. EMS report?
I have nothing. I have my report to receive and file.
Thank you, sir. Code enforcement report?
Liquor control reports were handed into the office.
Thank you. Questions? GPW report?
Good evening. Everybody should have a copy of my report. As listed, I have it on there pretty straightforward, so I'd like to ask the board to receive and file. If you have any questions, any questions that anyone may have.
And officials, please. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Labor report? None at this time?
She handed in to be filed.
Okay, thank you. Supervisors report? Would like to report on the compost situation. I received an email from the clerk's office regarding the compost material storage. It's another site investigation done by the DEQ regarding the Moreno's property at approximately 28 Grashad. I spoke to the investigator that was on site, and I will find her name here. I believe it's Susan McDonald. She states at this time that there are no violations on site and everything is okay, that he meets or exceeds the storage of compost and is using it for farm application. That was as of today. We're also keeping track through our code enforcement, measurements of the pile. Mr. Moreno's led us on the property every time. Mrs. McDonald has also stated he's been more cooperative and that what he's doing falls definitely within the guidelines. I believe he also got the email. He only has to meet one of the three criteria under the GMS, and she said he's definitely doing that. So I wanted to let everybody know, because we did receive a few complaints, that we were still checking on it. That's all I have. Treasurers report?
I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Trustee Paisley. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Orders and bills?
Number 17 was removed because it's an agenda item tonight.
High-Tech Systems Services?
Yep.
New toll?
I have a couple things I'd like to request from either Karen or Jody, whoever has them. I would like to see, just put it in my box, an itemized list of Huron consultants. I just want to find, see why the tolls are so high on those. And also, last page, 54, why is there mileage for working at the senior center? We've never paid that to our senior coordinator.
Can you answer the mileage for the senior center?
I just, it's not specifically a question for you. It's kind of a question for the board. I didn't know why we were paying for mileage now for the senior coordinator when it is not included in what we pay the senior coordinator.
I started using the township car when I could, but it wasn't always available, and that was not working. So then I started using my car and just kept tracking mileage. I turned it in.
Now, are we going to set a precedence here now? Are we, when our coordinator does come back, is she supposed to put in for her mileage? When people go to the store? I mean, I'm asking. I don't know. At some point, was it decided that we are just going to pay for mileage every time somebody goes to the store?
I believe this took place, like you said, when the car had broken down and we were without a vehicle, waiting for the new vehicle. You used your personal vehicle to travel. She was filling in for the senior coordinator at that time.
Still didn't answer my question, but...
Well, normally, the costs would be covered with the township vehicle, but because we didn't have one, she had to go and get the items from the store for the senior center.
I know, but we have not done that for the, to present senior coordinator. Senior coordinator does not use a township car. She uses her own vehicle. So now are we going to have to redo her contract and allow her hours for when she stops and mileage on the car?
She hasn't questioned it.
Probably didn't know she could.
Probably didn't.
We're trying to save money here, and I can see that these things are adding up. Little things add up. Thank you.
Motion to accept the order and bills, except for the information that you want provided as far as Huron.
Motion by Trustee Paisley, supported by Clerk Keith. Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Well done. She didn't give the amount in the motion. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. $145,040.23.
I support the amended motion.
Thank you. Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Churchy? Nay. Paisley? Aye. Hattenbacher? Aye. Keith? Aye. Trautling? Aye.
Just a few questions, thank you. Trustees' report?
Everything that I have is filed at the front desk, as usual, for anyone to see after the meeting. Can you hear me? Okay.
I had three items on the planning commission level. We're still going, reviewing through the ordinance book to be sure that page by page is accounted for and that new pages are put in. Once we're sure with that, we'll approve that, and then we're going to go back and start working on different ordinances that we think need to be updated. The other thing is, unfortunately, Sheriff wasn't here, but there was a letter submitted by residents thanking the sheriffs for watching their property while they were on vacation. And also, just last Wednesday, I came home from a fundraiser in the evening, and there was a car in the ditch across the street from me. It was dark, there was nobody around, and everything. I called the sheriff, and I, you know, I called 911 because I didn't know how to reach him, and I said, this is not an emergency, but this car is there. Not being an emergency, that sheriff was out there in less than five minutes. So just to be assured that with our 24/7 coverage we have, they are out there. In fact, two cars responded within five minutes. So it was reassuring, especially since that was not an emergency. The last item I have is just a reminder that with your mail pickup on Saturday, there is a food drive. So if you remember, put a bag of food out there, and your mail carrier will be picking that up. Thank you.
So now are we going to have to. Leave that to Karen. Do her contract, redo her contract and allow her hours for when she stops and mileage on the car.
She hasn't questioned it.
Probably didn't know she could.
Probably didn't.
We're trying to save money here and I can see that these things are adding up. All little things add up. Thank you.
Welcome.
Motion to accept the order and bills, except for the information that you want provided
Motion by trustee Paisley, supported by clerk Keith. Deputy clerk, roll call please.
Well, then, she didn't give the amount in the motion. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll support the amended motion.
Thank you. Deputy clerk, roll call please.
Churchy?
Nay.
Paisley?
Aye.
Ottenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. Trustees' report.
Everything that I have is filed at the front desk as usual. For anyone to see after the meeting. Can you hear me? Okay. Great.
I had three items on the planning commission level. We're still going, reviewing through the ordinance book to be sure that page by page is accounted for and that new pages are put in. Once we're sure with that, we'll approve that and then we're going to go back and start working on different ordinances that we think need to be updated. The other thing is, unfortunately, the sheriff wasn't here, but there was a letter submitted by residents thanking the sheriffs for watching their property while they were on vacation. And also, just last Wednesday, I came home from a fundraiser in the evening and there was a car in the ditch across the street from me. It was dark, there was nobody around and everything. I called the sheriff and I, you know, I called 911 because I didn't know how to reach him and I said, "This is not an emergency, but this car is there." Not being an emergency, that sheriff was out there in less than five minutes. So just to be assured that with our 24/7 coverage we have, they're out there. In fact, two cars responded within five minutes. So it was reassuring, especially since that was not an emergency. The last item I have is just a reminder that with your mail pickup on Saturday, there is a food drive. So if you remember, put a bag of food out there and your mail carrier will be picking that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk's report.
The only things I have is we have an election tomorrow for the Anchor Bay School District. They are asking for a mileage. The other thing is, all new voter identification cards have been placed in the mail, so they'll be watching for them. This was mandated by the state because of the redistricting after the 2010 census. The area has not changed, but the House and Senate congressional districts have. So look for your new card. Nothing else changed. We're still voting in the same place. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Make a motion to receive and file all the reports.
Support. Motion by trustee Paisley, supported by clerk Keith. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Unfinished business. A change in hours of operation discussion? I believe before, due to the weather, right now, we're in a situation where we're neither heating or cooling, pretty much on its own. Talk taking place of going back from 8:30 to 5 o'clock Monday through Thursday would be my recommendation. We already have DPW assuming those Thursday hours, so it'd just be an office staff.
I would agree with that. If we did it starting, this is May, starting June 1st, so that there's time to put ads in the paper and such, so that there's notification. I don't know how everyone else feels about it, but.
That doesn't bother me. I'd just like to get it back.
I would presume then the office staff has been informed that there was a possibility of a change. That's what we were, I mentioned last month. People have doctor's appointments set up on Thursday and Friday. They want to know so they can change things and make appointments. Not here.
Anybody else have a problem with June 1st?
Make a motion that we start the old hours on June 1st, which will allow us to put in the annual paper and advertise our new old hours.
8:30. 8:30 on Monday through Thursday.
On Monday through Thursday.
Thank you. Support. Motion by trustee Paisley, supported by clerk Keith. Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Village New Haven Community Festival.
Is Jamie here tonight, please?
Jamie Colton did say he was going to be here. He is still requesting a sponsorship. I did receive another legal opinion. I think he emailed the whole board that states clearly that a township board can, for the purpose of defraying the expenses, do this when I call the MTA. They also stated the same thing, that it is common practice, that it's done before. I do believe there is a precedence set when you give to one community and not to another within your, within your boundaries. And that's where I feel if we can give to one community, we should be able to give to all the communities within reason, within our boundaries. I don't think it's fair to give to one and not the other. The amount that they're asking for is a lot less than we gave to the odd, basically. It was a large sum of money. This is a sum of money that impacts a lot of people within our community and within Village New Haven. It's not just fireworks. It's basically a three-day event, track and field, entertainment, fireworks, vendors within our community, businessmen within our community. It's the closest thing we have in our community to any type of event. It's one way to unstigmatize our community, I should say, rather than being looked at just for the landfill or prison. It puts us on the map for something else other than that. And not to say that they're not an asset to our community too, because waste management has helped us tremendously with revenue, as well as the prison has also. But that's my feelings. I feel it's a very good cause to give sponsorship to.
The help with the odd was not to Richmond. It was to kids in the whole area. In fact, you made sure you wanted statistics and who, how many times people in Lennox were using it.
That's correct.
You were proven that it was mainly used by Lennox. So it wasn't giving to another community. It was giving to kids from all these areas, including New Haven.
Actually, the building is owned by the Richmond School District.
Right. You're giving to the program that kids in Lennox.
And the building, everything that it involves.
I have some questions for Jamie after looking at this and also seeing the article in the paper on Wednesday. It said that New Haven has taken the community event line item out of their budget. So they're not doing that. So my question is, are they putting into this as the municipality? Or are they just asking us to? And along with what Karen said, the odd is a 12-month program for kids, not a three-day event. And you state that there is a new legal opinion and I haven't seen that. And I'm not saying that it doesn't exist, I'm just saying.
I believe that should have been emailed over to you today.
Okay. This is the first I've seen it. Interesting.
Last month, it was asked, and you can read it in the minutes, it was asked for Jamie to come to show us what the sponsorship programs are. And I think our position tonight should be to just get the information out there so people can be sponsors if they want. Let the business people know and let the residents know that they have a choice then of whether they want to donate. They want to be, you know, they want to be a hundred dollar sponsor or a business wants to be a sponsor. That way, we're not taking it out of the general fund tax money. So I think, I mean, it's, we're on cable. Let people know that there are sponsor programs available.
Comments?
I agree with the previous attorney's recommendations that we cannot take out of the general fund to pay for this. But I think as, we're valen, people are volunteering, we're passing the word, and we're letting, letting people know that there are sponsorship available.
I did see it online and it is something that I did look up. I'm going to read this aloud. "The Township Board of a Township, the Board of Trustees in the Village or the Council of a City in this State may appropriate money for the purpose of defraying the expenses of the proper observance of Armistice, Independence, and Memorial or Declaration Day." There is, there is more information, but primarily, the MTA has given us information that if we can find a precedent that had been set showing that giving taxpayer money to a village or another township has been done and has been done legally, then we can do it. I called Jamie this week and I emailed Wendy Collier, who is, what is she, the chairperson of the.
Right.
And I asked them to please put, talk to their lawyer and to bring forward and share with all of us. And he did send this to office, or at least I got it, but perhaps it was later in the day. And I find it's very difficult because all of us would like to help.
Yes.
And I know that. I asked them to come up with the words that we could present to you as a township, as a, as a village, that we could do this. And unfortunately, the verbiage is not there. It could be said that they are celebrating Independence Day three weeks later. I'm not comfortable with that. If you want to help, we do have paperwork here. If you want to put forward with your own funds or your own volunteer time, it would be greatly appreciated at this time, that is, but that's what I can say. I make a motion that until the president or the chairperson of New Haven comes forward and gives us the verbiage that states a precedent, that we withhold giving money at this time.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Paisley, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion passes. Assessment Administration Services. Clerk Griffin.
Could I make a comment about last month's meeting the government assessing department?
Sure can.
The supervisor stated publicly that the assessment department is four years behind in its work. I respectfully ask specifically, what and where are we behind? I also submit to you the following in proof of my department's ability to keep good records and do our job despite the short work week and constant interference of others. As of today, the assessment department is up to date on the following. All new constructions is on the road. Building permits are up to date. Splits are up to date, all drawn and in the computer. PREs are up to date. Transfer accedavits are reported. Deeds are updated each Monday morning. Name changes are up to date. Sale files are up to date. Land value maps are on file and being updated. We have developed economic condition factors. All 2012 reports are filed timely at the county and state. This includes a board review action, assessment rolls, school district reports, sale 4025, and value of the EQL 460. The board review, report decisions, which by law are to be mailed by, to the taxpayers by June 1st or mailed out the first week of May. The assessment department, in attempt to update our records, have accomplished the following. 2010 reappraisal of the village was completed. 2011 started reappraisal of the township. Sections 1 through 16 field inspections are completed. The Apex drawings are updated of Sections 1 through 3. In 2012, plans are to continue the reappraisal of the township. The state acts that the assessing department review at least 20% of their parcels annually. The above represents more than the state requires and shows a three-year history of the progress in our department. Along with this, the township vehicle wasn't always available due to the fact that we had to share with other departments. Plus, the car was in the shop for repairs half of the time until we received a new vehicle a little over a month ago. We have only had five people in the assessment department from the first week in January until April 9th, for a total of three months, not all these years like you made it sound. New pictures of all the reapprised properties are in the computer. The oldest picture on the computer is 2005 and not 1978, as you stated at the meeting. Trailer parts, each lot has a field card with the trailer's name, owner's name on each, being updated as information becomes available. The carports, decks, and sheds are also reported on the field carts. There were over 200 tribunals on the dock dating back to 2009. The assessment department is continually preparing for tribunal cases. It is required that we be present at each of these hearings and that the paperwork and the defensive assessments be submitted 21 days in advance. This is an ongoing process faced by all assessors, taking a large amount of time away from their other duties. Each case results in hours and sometimes days of preparation. I am currently up to date on all tribunals. Most cases are being settled outside the tribunal for expediency. This is a right had by an agreement between the taxpayer and assessor as to bill. In the midst of all this, we converted to a new software and are learning the new program. It has been published in a newspaper that my department is four years behind. My name and reputation as an assessor has been damaged by this accusation. I dispute this claim asked again simply where we are behind. I would also like to address the issue of providing service for the residents as stated in the newspaper. This also includes their safety. In September, my staff and I agreed to remove the pictures that showed the back of the resident's home due to the increase in freight events due to the economy. When the March order review was closed and the 2012 assessment rule was frozen and put on the web, I noticed that the back of the homes were still showing. So I took it upon myself two weeks ago to remove these pictures. The safety of our residents is very important to me and I see no reason to put them in danger. Respectfully submitted, Betty Hardwood. Respectfully submitted, Betty Hardaway.
All information that was issued, was issued from your department, from you?
Yeah.
When you were asked what the status of your department was? If, I have one question, if you were all caught up, why didn't we have six people in your department? Why, from the last three years, have we had extra help in your department constantly? Why has Karen Ottenbacher, myself, Jeanette, been in multiple meetings to discuss this problem ongoing for all these years? And apparently, I must have been sitting in different meetings because, unless you're going to say different, Karen, every meeting, there was a problem. I have actual email from you stating there's a problem. I was at border review where you stated there was a huge problem, right on a document that was handed to border review, right from your words, "We have a huge problem assessing." Constant, every time, we had a huge problem, and it was always somebody else that it was being pointed at. Every resource that I could get from any department, personnel that was not working in this building, was shifted to your department. Every resource. I myself stayed here multiple occasions till 10 o'clock at night folding envelopes. I myself went out measuring houses for your department, as did other people. So I'd like to know what you're talking about. I would like to know where you're getting this information, because if this is so, if you're caught up, why is there six people in your department? Why is this all taking place over all these years? It's my only question. Why, at the last meeting where we had assessment, administration services here, why were there no questions at that time?
I wasn't at the meeting in April.
You were at the last meeting when they were here?
No, she wasn't.
Yes, she was, yes, she was, sir. She sat here through the whole meeting and didn't say a word.
I just, that meeting was for them. That was called a workshop for them, and they deserved to have that meeting to themselves.
Anybody was asked that they could say anything at any time? Matter of fact, even the...
I have nothing to say.
Even the Anna was asked if she'd like to make a statement at that time.
I have nothing to say against them. They are both very good people.
Also, too, for the record, too, I would like the keys to all the recycling bins by the end of this meeting, and I've been told today there's been many trips with many loads of papers out of the assessing office into both recycling barrels. So I would like two witnesses, and I'd like their stuff retrieved out of all the barrels tonight. I'd like to know what all those meetings were for, if there was no problems and we were so caught up. All these meetings that we had regarding those issues.
We have problems what was to do with a staff member.
With one staff member?
When they were told to do something, half the time, they didn't do it. And when they did do it, I had to redo it. I cannot just redo other people's work and do mine too.
And that subject was broached three years ago, correct?
It's been approached several times.
Several times, and what was said to be done? What was our standard...
I brought it to you.
What was our standard operating procedure to be, you were to write that individual off and bring it to my attention immediately? That was discussed in front of treasurer Ottenbacher? How many times did you do that?
And when I brought it to you lately, I was addressed that I was the wrong one.
You didn't do it one time?
I did too.
No, you didn't.
I'm not...
Are you, are you aware now that everything's caught up? When did this take place that you were caught up?
I've been caught up right along. All these here on here is true.
So you've been...
My names and my addresses are all...
I'm just asking, if you had to say from a date when you've been caught up, when would you say that is back?
Right along, but I've been telling you, at the same time, we don't have our reappraisal done.
I'm asking you...
We started that as soon as we could.
I'm asking you what month and date that you're, you're telling me now that you're all caught up, that this, did this take place?
Well, we're all caught up to date.
She doesn't work in your department, Betty. You're the head of your department.
Well, I have to answer to them.
Pardon?
I have to answer to them.
Yeah, but you're the head of your department.
All right, we're all caught up.
As what day and month?
Today.
Pardon?
Today.
Okay. So it just happened today?
No, it's been worked over the three-year period, like I said there. We've been working right along because the village took us a year to a year and a half to do, and they're done.
Okay.
And we're what? We've got 36 sections in the township, and we're to section 16. That's about halfway. I think that's pretty good.
Yeah, but it's not done yet?
No, but we also don't have nine, we also don't have nine people like you're hiring.
And you have, I have no idea, I, you say we're not hiring nine people?
Well, if they're going to have six out in the field...
I've heard no mention of hiring nine people. I've heard mention of hiring a staff that is probably half the budget of the assessing department right now.
Yeah, and how many is on the staff?
They answered all those questions at the last meeting.
You're right, the media.
I believe your total cost for assess, assessment, and where Bill is right now. See him there? Bill, can you go up to the podium? I believe after your rechecks and your others, it would be 71,000?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to thank the board for having us here again. We obviously spoke on several occasions and answered a lot of questions, and, you know, as stated in the previous meetings, you know, we're here to help. We'd love to help in any way we can, do a myriad of different services. The current proposal was $71,000 a year for assessment administration services and a little over $85,000 a year for the reappraisal.
Thank you.
So basically, it's not $71,000 a year. It is after, but that's one thing I was kind of wondering about, why is there a charge of $85,000 plus 71, when the 85 is just to get everything like...
Rechecked.
Rechecked and up to date. Then, following year, just services would be 71. I don't know why there's a twofold charge.
The proposal was for the appraisal of the properties that haven't been looked at up to this point. So we assumed New Haven had been looked at, so the proposal's to look at all the trailer parts, the remaining parcels in that extension. It's a per parcel rate. That's just to make sure all of our records are good, looked at, and everything's up to date, so we can pass the A while when it comes to being 90%. The $71,000 is to do assessing administration on an annual basis. The reappraisal is a separate entity, so the first year would be 85,000 plus 71, and then after that, it would be the 71,000.
Also, too, I do want to make a comment about resident's safety. After Betty informed my department that she had a meeting with the sheriff and that it was due to his giving her information about break-ins that no longer pictures would be on the backside of houses and everything, I brought him into my office in front of the deputy supervisor. When I asked him what had taken place in this meeting and was this true, his response to me was he had no knowledge of any meeting or no knowledge of ever talking to you about any of that. That came from...
We did not have a meeting. I said, "We were in general conversation in my office. We were talking about everything and anything."
Deputy Corrigan said...
And when I asked him how it was going, and he said, "Well, there was, you know, an increase in that," and I said, "It probably wouldn't hurt to remove the backs of these pictures," and he said, all he said was, "It probably wouldn't hurt." He didn't tell me to do it. I took that upon myself.
Is that practice done in all communities?
It's done in a lot of communities now.
It is?
Uh huh.
What, what communities by office has it done in?
I can't tell you right off the top of my head.
Just one?
I know when I talked to Steve at the county, he said there was other ones.
Okay, thank you.
I know when we looked at the numbers, it looked, it looks like going the other route is a bargain type thing, but there's also things that weren't taken into consideration, the legal fees, the tribunals, everything like that. So I don't think it's so economically great to go with another company just versus our assessing department, so. And that was me looking at the original numbers. I don't think it jives.
Have we ever been threatened with 14-part review?
We haven't, we haven't been threatened, no.
Also, today, too, we're given another resignation by an employee from the assessing department.
You say another, who's the other?
I should say one resignation. Take the correction.
I understand that having this company go out and do all the field inspections and stuff and getting that so that we are completely finished, they've done 16 of the 36, I would like to see those all done because I think that's part of the contention here, is that the whole township has not been reassessed. With the loss of Deanna's resignation today, that is one more person that won't be in that department, so this would take a lot off the department. The only other thing I can think is to go with the whole thing, do it for the one year instead of three, so that'd be 156,000 plus. My thought would also be to retain Betty for three months or six months, so there's continuity, so that if there's questions, she can be there to look. You can't just have a new company come in and hit the ground running without some kind of background. Betty is also the face of the assessing department. She's the face of Lennox Township. People know her, they feel comfortable with her. And then after a year, we can see how things are going. That's just my thoughts.
Now, if we were to retain Betty, where would her salary come from?
It would still come from assessing, and I wasn't even thinking of full-time in a diminished capacity, because if we have them in here, we don't need a full-time, you know, Level 3. But I can't believe that they're going to come in and hit the ground running without having background. You know, they're not from the area. That's all.
Bill, would you have Betty as a consultant on a call basis be helpful to you?
It's like you said, we're very flexible, we're not going to do a 50-page contract. We'll work with you folks in any way we can to make your lives easier and to make sure the job's done and done well. So however you need us to help you, we're more than willing to work with you.
So you would be agreeable that...
Sure.
...get Betty on the assessment? Okay, I've done a lot of, you know, I asked a lot of questions while you were here last Wednesday. Done a lot of soul-searching and thinking about this. I, like Jody, would like to maybe go, give a one-year contract. You said it was open-ended, we could put anything we want in there?
Yeah, but what we do is, and it can get real specific, because, you know, every township does things a little differently, so we'll sort of, it's a work in progress. Of course, yeah, we'll find out what works best for all of us and makes this comfortable, and we're obviously working with you.
Well, what I'm going to ask is a little different than what you've done in Bruce and your other townships. I have in my hand a paper that's got 14 names on it. These are all people that have worked in the assessing department since I've been here 24 years ago. I would like, in the contract, whether it be your appraisal, field work, when everything is done, you said you were going to hire some people in here. I do not want any of these people that are on this list hired. If you can put that in the contract...
May I sit down?
I don't see...
Well, if you can do that, and our...
Whether they're qualified to work, and don't, we're planning to try to restrict our role if they're not too big anyway, so.
But if you can do that, put that in there, and our attorney puts it over and tells me that that's okay, and everything else is fine, I will agree to, I'll be the first one to make the motion to hire you.
You're saying the, none of these people can work as residents?
Well, there, today you're going to ask for them to stay on?
She's just saying to help, not after the fact, after everything is done. That wasn't my suggestion, Jody come up with that.
Can you tell me why?
Because I think the finger is being pointed at one person here, and one person did not cause this big problem. There's a lot of people who worked in that department, and I just think that we're going to do this, we're going to do a clean slate, let these people do their job, no interference from this board.
I like what you say, and I think that should be done right out of the get-go. Make him responsible for everything, no interference whatsoever, it's on his head. No keeping anybody, so when anything, anytime anything's wrong, guess who we go back to? Bill. Bill's the man. If there's other people involved, the figure could go, "This person did this, this person did this." This is all we dealt with for the last three years, that names on this list, this person did it, this person did it. Every time you see something, there's initials of, "Oh, no, I didn't touch that." Letting him do it this, this way, it's on him. They're totally responsible for everything. If he doesn't get the job done, he's gone. If he gets, if he gets done, he stays. It's as simple as that. End of story. He has told us we won't even have to worry about that down there. How do you dispute that? How do you dispute when you contact the other two communities and they say they got perfect scores after they've taken over? Why make this harder than it needs to be?
Still want to do this, Bill? Really?
I can tell you, I'm very emphatic because this has been an ongoing problem for the last three years, and people have been in those meetings, and it astounds me tonight that they're going to say everything's caught up. It astounds me. This way, this gentleman right here will be responsible solely for that department with zero interference. That way, when something comes up wrong, it's on him.
And one of the things, I think that asking him to do this without him sitting down with us and looking at this list, not that it, any particular person, it doesn't matter.
It's just an attachment to him, what he's going to put together, and I would, I would like that in there, and I would have a problem. We'll get this taken care of.
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's not that he can't hire these people. He can't hire these people to work in this municipality. These people could work for him and be in Kimball or...
Bruce.
Bruce or Shelby.
And why? I mean, what is the problem?
So that there is, everything is about the personnel, and so if we're... And so, if we're getting rid of our assessing department and having another company, these people shouldn't be.
Okay. Now, in as far as keeping Betty on, as a consultant, is that what you're looking for?
Not necessarily. That was just, I'm thinking him coming in. I meant him, the company coming in and hitting the ground running. There's always gonna be questions. Why this? Why that? So, I even said temporarily. I didn't say, you know, keep her, keep Betty on for...
Actually, I addressed that situation at the last meeting. They have informed us that they have a standard operating procedure for everything.
Standard?
That they have... So, I don't, I don't understand what other help they would need. If they need help from somebody that's already here, we don't need them. If they can't come in here and do this job, we don't need them here. I'll be the first one to say that. If they're not confident in their skills to come here and take care of this problem, they shouldn't be here. But after the interview, he's assured me, from what I've heard talking to the other communities, he's more confident that they can handle this and get it done with no problems.
And I had no problem with the meeting the other night either. They answered all the questions I had. I was just looking at... I walked in and looked at somebody else's books before.
This is just went on way too long. And to have this situation, we have people that are losing houses. Safety's great, but we gotta make sure that we keep people in our houses and make sure they're paying their fair share, whether it's too high, too low, that our information is true and accurate always. That's, that's, that's our duty to our residents. True and accurate information, and it be done in a timely manner. I've not seen where this department has ever been caught up. This needs to take place, needs to take place quick and be done once and for all. Plus also, you said, Bill, if I get you back of the, you would have immediate meetings with the residents, Town Hall meetings, that you would explain the whole process?
Yeah, we'd like to do a, it's a PowerPoint presentation. We usually do it once a year annually, probably sometime in January, where we just explain to the folks how we do, what we do, and why we do what we do. And then if they are interested in appealing, how they would do that, how they would get the information from us, or the information we have available, and how the best way to appeal. And then answer the questions they have. Usually, the question-answer sessions are as long as the PowerPoint itself. But it is pretty detailed, but functionally, they'll understand exactly why we do what we do and how we do it. Like I said before, the system really isn't designed for, say, Lennox Township. It's designed for a war or a west end. You've got a neighborhood of 500 parcels, and the same house has been built way and over again, maybe three or four miles. So, out here, you've got different homes and different sized properties. You've got the acreage pieces. So, it's good for them to understand that there are just limits to mass appraisal. This is how we do it. And if you have any questions or concerns, come and see us.
I have a situation where I have residents come in, and they don't come in once. They don't come in twice. I've had residents come in as many as 15 times. And I get, ask questions to explain it. And they're telling me that they're being told, "Well, you won't understand it if I explain it to you." And taking the time out to do it, and that's what we need. Taking the time to do it, to explain to them, no matter how long it takes, that they understand what the process is. Instead of saying, "I'm too busy right now," or "I can't get in." I understand that sometimes there aren't. But meetings can be set with individuals, and it can be taken care of. This is, this is long overdue. Long overdue.
I want to go back to keeping Betty on call on a consultant basis. That is, am I understanding correctly that is what you're looking for?
That's all I was just to help.
And again, how would she be paid?
That we would have to work out. It would have to be some kind of contract thing. You know, it was just something I thought about over the weekend. Temporary.
Temporary basis. All right. I would like to make a motion. And if you're ready to have to help us on this, then we do hire assessment administrative services for one year at $156,270, utilizing Assessor Betty Hardway on occasion for consultant's basis. The contract, which needs to be?
Are you saying like an as-needed by them?
That's good. As-needed by them.
First, I think she should be asked if that's what she'd like to do.
That's true.
I'd be more than happy to show where things are at, where they are kept, and what things, what stages they are at.
Could you come up to the microphone, please? Thank you.
I have no problem with staying and showing them where things are kept and what stages are where. You know, we have many tribunals, and I think it's important that they know what level they are at and where they should be. And there's some other issues that they may have questions in which I would be more than happy to answer.
I think that the information you could give them would be invaluable. And they would be very happy to have you as a consultant when needed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now...
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Thank you.
Pardon?
Enter list, where you're gonna do that.
All right, okay. I asked you for your help on that, so... There is a list of people who were asking the assessment administration services not to hire at any time during this process.
For Hero.
For Hero. No, go ahead, Bill.
I was just gonna say, the not be utilized and wanted. But you said for Hero, we see you.
Now, we have to address when they would start. June 1st, 2012?
What would be the perfect, what would be your perfect starting date, Bill?
The sooner the better. But June's good. June, June will be good.
June 1st?
And I would like to say also, I don't know how to wrap this in there, that we do need to have one, we need to actually sit down and put this contract together and we're all in agreement.
Well, you're making a decision on that tonight.
Oh.
You just made a motion to hire them.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll put it together in two weeks after that.
Comment?
Yes, just ask the company. They weren't aware of what's been done. So, you put an amount to that. They had approval. They don't even know, they didn't realize a lot of that stuff was done. So, I don't know if you wanna put an amount. They should give you another figure. Because with all the stuff being done, I don't think they knew all that.
So, they're aware of the total number of parcels and what needs to be done?
Our contract, the way it'll be written, we'll give it to you the way it goes written, is a per parcel. And we assumed New Haven was done. When we get in there and whatever's done, you know, we're at a billion per parcel. So, if, you know, if something's done or more than part of the deal we need to do, we're not gonna spend the time to do it. But that's excluding New Haven and just the remaining parcels and the...
Well, I have one question regarding that, Bill.
Yeah.
You're saying excluding New Haven, then you're taking responsibility for New Haven?
Well, like you said, at our meetings prior, we'll go out through some samples. You know, we'll go out through some samples of New Haven and if...
My biggest fear, this is the only thing I need you to overcome, is that you get in there, first time he finds something wrong, he's like, "Well, that was the whole department." That's why when you guys take over, I want everything your responsibility.
We'll go through some samples. If they're not at 90%, we'll let you know. If they're 90%, we're good. Because that's what the state requires, 90% accuracy. So, we'll go do some sample studies at some point and let you know. But I'm assuming they're done and done well.
Okay.
And my comment is just that there was an amount given.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I know, it's rather awkward.
Sir, can you say, hold on. Come on, come on to my position. Sorry, sir. Should you please read back the motion as stated?
Sure. Read your motion.
Contract with?
Assessment Administration Services.
For one year for the field inspection and assessing services in the amount of $156,270, I think you said, utilizing Betty Hardway for consulting when needed, with the list added, starting June 1st.
That's her motion. One second, sir. Motion by Trustee Paisley, supported by Clerk Key. Yep.
Yeah, I have a, I'm just listening to this, and you're doing one year when the real value with this plan is the second and third year. Why wouldn't you do that? I mean, you've got it locked in at $71,000 for the second and third year. Why wouldn't you just go one year? I don't understand that at all.
Especially, I believe, he said it's terminable upon will of both parties.
All of our agreements...
Thirty days, I believe you said.
All of our agreements have a 30-day amount because obviously, you know, we wanna do a good job. It's still the 30 days around, so. Whether you go one year or three years, it's gotta be 30 days.
Okay, any other discussion, questions?
I'm gonna raise a point. I raised it the last meeting. I know it's implied in all this. I think the motion needs to specifically state that you're terminating Betty Hardway except as noted, as well as all the other assessing department employees, who basically disbanded the assessing department.
Yes.
You want to amend your motion?
You can amend it to the three years.
And include that?
With 30-day...
You have to come up to my position.
Technically, you have to vote on the motion as stated because it's been first and seconded. And then, before you want to amend it, then you have to take another motion to amend it. So...
Another comment, though, was if you look on their contract, it does say assessing services, $71,000 for first year, and consumer price index increase for each additional year. So, it's not locked in at $71,000. It could go up the second and third year. So, it's not, we're not benefiting it, saying it one year, three years, whatever.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to...
Well, yeah, let me do the first one first. First motion, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion fails. Like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a new motion that we hire assessment administration services for the period of one year, beginning June 1st, 2012, for a total of $156,270, and to utilize Assessor Betty Hardway on occasion for consulting services. And someone help me here.
List.
Including the list of people that are not to be hired by assessing during that year and...
Termination.
Termination or disbanding of our present assessment department.
Thank you.
Come on.
Support. Motion by Trustee Paisley, supported by Clerk Key. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, Bill and Lisa. Take one minute, wait for the... Do business. Set public hearing date for 2012, 2013 budget.
Make a motion that we set the public hearing for the 2012, 2013 budget for the June 2012 meeting.
We take a shot?
June 4th.
Thank you. Motion by Clerk Key, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other discussion? Questions? June 4th. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Policy manual workshop? Want to set a date on that also? Did you recall, there's one other thing we discussed on that regarding the policy manual workshop, there was one other thing, too.
Per insurance, these substance abuse or non-abuse?
Correct.
Yes, go on.
Correct.
There's a few things that just need to, just need to do a review and tweaks and things.
All right, thank you. Do you want to let them know what's a good, good time to dig in there? Where everybody can be available?
I'd like you, but it has to be seven, 7:30 or something.
Are Thursdays good for you?
Yeah, Thursdays. And I could try to make it like 6 or something. 6, 6:30 is probably the earliest.
The office would be open at that point again?
June 7th?
Sure. Why not? Let's get it over with. Thursday?
Six o'clock? Sure.
Well, I have an idea where... Well, no, we're taking care of that on the fourth. That's the first Monday, right? Is there any way to incorporate before that? Our 7:30 meeting, since we'll be here until 5:30? You want to knock them out on the same day? Since everybody will be here prior for the 7:30 meeting?
The budget, the same day?
Sure.
Um, I do, or when our next meeting is, meeting at 6 o'clock, we would meet between 6 and 7:30 on the policy.
I barely make it here for 7:30 Monday is my longest day. Sorry.
So, we're back to June 7th at 6:00 p.m.?
June 7th, 6:00 p.m. Thank you. Salute.
Subbar.
the seniors, and our brightest foundation met me here last week to... They want Lennox Township to be an official site so they can sponsor us for our exercise sessions and publicize that we are a site. They have no, nothing out in this area at all for anybody that has limitations. So she came out here to see the building, mainly where the exercises held, whether there's stairs or what they have to do to get the room ready, what moving tables or chairs, because there are places that they do have to do that, how close it is to the restrooms, where the parking lot is, how close it is to walk, if there's adequate parking. She was very, very impressed with our building and our facility. She doesn't see any problems here at all, and she would love to be a joint co-sponsor. It doesn't cost us anything. We can use their logo on sponsoring sessions, two weeks, I'm sorry, two days a week for six weeks each session, and it would still be Linda teaching the class, and we don't have to charge, and if we do charge the participants, the money stays here, whether it's used to pay Linda or to buy something for exercising purposes. That's pretty much it. If we choose to pay, it's totally up to us. We can advertise as many sessions as we want, you know, six weeks at a time. She would love to get started, Linda is so news. They have many different types of classes and training. Training is free, if it's not free, there's a fee, they pay for it and not us. There's a class that Linda wants to go to, it's path class, where they do some stretching and toning, and then they go out and walk the path and do exercising out there, and that's also a six-week program, but the training is, you know, don't get scared, eighteen hundred dollars, but the arthritis foundation picks up the full tuition. So, you know, it's really a wonderful program.
Well, it's great for our residents.
It is. We, and I just want to tell you a little story about one of our residents who's been exercising here for probably three, maybe four weeks, but I think it's more like three. After her first week, when she came back on the second week, she told the instructor she's got arthritis, and she said, "Just exercising that first week twice," which she got up the next morning, she didn't hurt so bad, and it made me want to cry. So I think this is an awesome program. We have as few as eight to eleven ladies averaging, but there's been more like sixteen, seventeen, so it's been awesome.
This is only for senior citizens?
Yes, they don't have an age limit, so, you know, anybody who has arthritis can go.
And so what they're asking is that we just host their program?
Correct, and be a co-sponsorship with them.
And the only question I get is where it says, you know, what the liabilities are agreed for.
Oh, right, each participant would have to fill out this form.
No, 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 not that. This one. It says that we would be responsible for providing any needed equipment. Is this just normal equipment, or would that be something?
The only thing we've provided the best is a chair.
Right.
Yeah.
That's all we've provided at this point, but it's part of, it's part of this contract.
Oh, I think that, that's more like those exercise bands, they use those periodically. Sometimes they have, I don't know if you've seen it or not, a huge, like a parachute, and they all go in a circle, and they do different exercises, holding on to this parachute. So it's...
But they supply that?
Yes.
Because the contract says that we do too. That's all, that's just a question.
I can verify that.
The type of equipment that you just spoke of is, you know, that was something major. And then, the insurance that they're stating that we need to have, is that up and above what we already have, or is that really what we already have? Sorry.
I'm not sure. I can check that out.
If you want to table it, if you can get the information, I mean...
I think the insurance one is the biggest one, because it's stating that we need comprehensive liability insurance with limits of not less than a million dollars.
Okay, I know what you're referring to now, and yes, that's, what we have is sufficient.
Okay, what we have is...
Yes.
Then that was my only question.
Well, what it says is we have to get the staff agency to issue a certificate of insurance for the arthritis foundation.
See, I thought they were, it was the other way around, they were going to give it to us, but we...
I think the agency refers to us. And the other thing the board needs to be aware of is in the second part of that clause two down, there is an indemnification agreement where Lennox Township has to hold arms and indemnify the arthritis foundation from and against any old liabilities, which is another reason why you want to make sure that they're listed on the insurance. I don't think that the insurance certificate will cost anything, but somebody needs to touch base with the staff.
Okay. She also gave me this one to show that they sell this for four dollars, and it's just all their exercises and that, and if we do charge the participants, like a dollar a class or whatever, even if it's, you know, put a can out and say a donation, that money they collect can go for these, and then give these out to all the participants.
So we're going to table this on the motion? I make a motion that we're going to table the posting and co-sponsorship of the arthritis foundation program here, so we'll be able to secure some more information from them.
Motion by Clerk Keating, supported by Clerk Keating.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Streetlight proposal, low plank, Grashit Avenue. This is common, a request of a resident. We do have a light at this time at twenty-eight Grashit. Or there's home light at this road, at the Grashit intersection.
Okay, when I was reading through this, and this is just a question, the eight sixty-seven is what our costs would be, and then the two fifty is yearly, and then plus the other son running to it?
Correct. That's what I, that's what I'm looking at here.
Is that how you read it? That's what I, I wasn't sure how to read, you know, I'm like...
Yep. Yeah, it looks like a three-year minimum.
Is this the first that we've heard of this request?
I'm sorry, Clerk Keating.
I just got one comment that you want to think about, and that you're probably going to have to consider, that's an M dot right of way, so we're going to have to actually ask for permission from M dot to do that.
This is, I believe, pole light on one of their telephone poles.
Right, but it'll be in the M dot right of way, and they control everything that goes on in that right of way.
Okay.
And if I'm looking at this right, this is just for a street light, not a signal, not a, just a...
Right. It's one of the, they mount on the side of the telephone pole, it's an illumination light, just basically to illuminate the intersection, and it's a, it's not a four, it wouldn't be a four-way intersection, it'd be like a three-way intersection without stopping.
Sounds like we need to check with M dot.
Has there been problems, accidents at this intersection? I know of none, just had a request from a resident, just one, one request, actually.
It was a bad one, a few years ago, yeah, it was two years ago, about five, six years ago, yeah, a couple guys were killed.
You know, it's hard to finance a Grashit, but we have to be sure that these costs and everything are going to substantiate it. I mean, it's something to look into, but first, I think, we'll start with M dot, check with M dot.
And then the costs clarify so that we know.
I can have Sir Matt look into it with M dot.
I make a motion that we table the streetlight proposal until we talk with M dot, and Sir Matt, what did you want Sir Matt to do?
Sir Matt can look into it with M dot. Motion by Trustee Paisley, supported by Clerk Keating. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Continuing education for assessing personnel?
I think that this one is now unmuted at this point.
Just so, go through the process, you want to...
I make a motion that we deny the continuing education for the assessment department personnel.
Support.
Thank you. Motion by Clerk Keating, supported by Clerk Keating. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Agricultural agriculture. We have quotes from Mr. Hamis of Dean for the truck. It's for the hood repair, the hood's rusting out on it, bubbling, so that would be redone and repainted.
It's oxidizing.
Correct. The, did you have the grill?
Well, the grill is what caused it to oxidize, it's rubbing against the paint.
We have the four wheels that all the paint has come off, and it's starting to rust, and sand and touch up the wheel wells, correct?
Two, the rear wheel wells.
In addition, did you get the, is this including the mud flaps? Okay, that's something we do separate.
The only one was, Grandi included the chrome running boards. Bayview, that's just for the paint. They said it was cheaper just to go to a different place and get the running boards and mud flaps.
What's your recommendation?
Well, Bayview, the cheapest one would be Grandi, but Bayview would take the rims off and sandblast them all the way down, where Ford's going to do them, Grandi will do, just sandblast them with the tires on. But Grandi, he included everything. Except the mud flaps. But that was for the chrome, the chrome running, running boards. Actually, when we bought this truck, it was only supposed to come with the rubber mats, and we got the running boards, the bed liner, and the carpeting for free.
The running boards are rusted.
Yeah, they, yeah, you can't fix those.
So are they going to take them off? Is that the plan?
The only one they're going to take them off is from...
Their junk, right?
Yeah.
And not replace them?
Yeah, one quote from Fred Grandy says includes running boards.
From Hoover, three fifty was their, they did the same thing, but he was way high for Hoover. They were way up to fifteen hundred. So you're actually looking between Bayview and Fred Grandi?
Well, it's actually, you subtract the three fifty, it's not even close for the running boards.
Oh, you mean Bayview? Yeah.
But Grandi quote would be much cheaper.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
But then he said, taking the words off.
It's no difference. I think we're going to continue to have trouble with those rims regardless of what's done.
Well, if you went to Chrome, we're talking probably a thousand...
We're not going to Chrome ones.
Well, I went to junk carriages, and they said they're like hen's teeth, once they get them in, they're gone. But the truck is a pretty good save, you know, there's no rust, you know, on the body itself. If we keep, fix it now, we'll save in the long run.
This is just basically preventative maintenance, keep everything rusting through, and keep it up.
Like I say, the truck's only got twenty-six thousand miles, and it's a two thousand four.
And your recommendation again was what?
Well, we could go to Fred Grandi with the cheapest.
With Fred Grandi, the stainless steel running boards, they have a lifetime warranty on them, so...
Let's take out the three fifty, nobody comes close to his quote.
If you take out the running boards, it's four hundred forty-six ninety, as opposed to the big one for the...
You know, it's, it's hard to find answering grasshut, but we have to be sure that these costs and everything are gonna substantiate the, I mean, it's something to look into, but. First, I think we start with M dot, check with M dot.
And then the cost clarified so that we know.
I can have Sir Matt look into M dot.
I make a motion that we table the streetlight proposal until we talk with M dot. And Sir Matt, what did you want Sir Matt to do?
Sir Matt can look into M dot. Motion by Trustee Paisley, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Township truck repair. We have quotes from Mr. Hamis of Dean for the truck. It's for the hood repair, the hood's rusting out on it, bubbling, so that would be redone and repainted.
It's oxidizing.
Correct. The, you have the grill?
Well, the grill is what caused it to oxidize, it's rubbing against the paint.
We have the four wheels that all the paint has come off and are starting to rust. And sand and touch up the wheel wells, correct?
Two, the rear wheel wells.
In addition, did you get the, is this including the mud flaps? Okay, that's something we do separate.
The only one was, Brandy included the chrome running boards. Bayview, that's just for the paint. They said it was cheaper just to go to a different place and get the running boards.
What's your recommendation?
Well, Bayview, the cheapest one would be Brandy, but Bayview would take the rims off and sandblast them all the way down. Where Ford's gonna do them, Brandy will do, just sandblast them with the tires on. But Brandy, he included everything. Except the mud flaps. But that was for the chrome, the chrome running, running boards. Actually, when we bought this truck, it was only supposed to come with the rubber mats, and we got the running boards, the bed liner, and the carpeting for free.
The running boards are rusted.
Yeah, they, yeah, you can't fix those.
So are they gonna take them off, is that the plan?
The only ones that are gonna take them off are.
They're junk, right?
Yeah.
And not replace them?
One quote from Fred Grandy saying includes running boards.
From Hoover three fifty was their, they did the same thing, but he was way high for Hoover. They were way up to fifteen hundred. So you're, you're actually looking between Bayview and Fred Grandy?
But it's actually, subtract the three fifty, it's not even close. For the running boards.
Oh, you mean Bayview? Yeah, they're.
The Grandy quote would be much cheaper.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
But then he said, taking the cars off.
It's the only difference. I think we're gonna continue to trouble with those rims and carves and what's done.
Well, if you went to Chrome, we're talking probably not.
We're not going to Chrome.
Well, I went to junkyards, and they said they're like hens, he's meant to get them, and they're gone. But the truck is a pretty good save, you know, there's no rust, you know, on the body itself. If we keep, fix it now, we'll save in the long run.
This is just basically preventative maintenance, keep everything rusting through and keep it up.
Like I say, the truck's only got twenty-six thousand miles. And it's a two thousand four.
And your recommendation again was what?
Well, we could go to Fred Grandy, who's the cheapest.
With Fred Grandy, the stainless steel running boards, they have a lifetime warranty on them, so.
Let's take out the three fifty, nobody comes close to it, it's cool.
If you take out the running boards, it's four hundred forty-six ninety, as opposed to a big one for the view.
Well, we deal with Fred Grandy quite a bit.
So you're good with the Fred Grandy one? And we're good with getting the. Adding the running boards to it?
The running boards, yeah, that's all included. The only thing we'd have to get extra would be the mud flaps. And that'll keep all the mud from flying up onto those running boards.
Make a motion that we approve repairs with, through Fred Grandy Ford in the amount of seven hundred ninety-six dollars ninety cents for the two thousand Ford F-150.
Support.
Thank you, motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee, I'm sorry, Treasurer Anbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Allocation or reallocation of C D B G funds? We've got word that we have funds for reallocation in the amount of five thousand four hundred and five dollars.
That's correct, the county as a whole went over their fifteen percent.
For services?
For services. So we have to reallocate that amount.
I'd like to, Jeff, you want to speak today real quick, too? One of the suggestions we have?
Yeah, I was contacted by Mr. Rosney on Thursday or Friday last week, he's the county director of community development block grant fund. He indicated that Lennox Township was going to have five thousand four hundred and five dollars they needed to reallocate. That money can only be used for capital bricks and mortar. The reason is because everyone in the county well exceeded the service projects that that money could be used for. Without going into a lot of detail, because we have a lot of folks in the audience, C D B G funds can only be used for very specific things generally. Senior programs helping load of moderate income persons or load of moderate income areas. A number of years ago now, not so many years ago, in two thousand and three, we built Station Three, and the communities agreed, a number of the communities around us, including Lennox and Richmond Township. Our owners agreed to use their community development block grant funds to help us retire the debt on that building, which was about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars at that time. We took out a note that was twenty years in length, that will term in twenty twenty, or that was initially scheduled to term, I should say, in twenty twenty-three. Thanks to Lennox Township, Richmond Township, and a number of our neighboring communities, in fact, who have contributed additionally to that payoff. That, that loan will now term as of today in about, in early twenty sixteen. So we will save, in fact, almost nine years in interest on that, on that loan. So, so, you know, it is well worth using any additional funds we have, in fact, to, to help you there.
So what are you saying, we can reallocate the five thousand four hundred and five dollars to the inmates?
That's right.
Great cause.
Subpoena. Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Anbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment?
I want to touch on the relationship between Lennox and New Haven. I am a Lennox resident, Robbie Ryan Murphy. I was born and raised in downtown New Haven, graduate of New Haven High School, and proud of it. Mr. Jones, if there is a problem between Lennox and New Haven, I don't know of it, it's trash talk. I think we need to accentuate the positive. And I think we've always worked with New Haven, I've been very proud of that. C D B G funds, they've come to us, we've given. My family and I go to New Haven church. My mom and dad graduated from New Haven, my family, I have given to both projects. As well, all my family's also given to both projects. One suggestion I have, and I see a lot of New Haven graduates in here tonight. One of the avenues might be to contact the alumni association. And I think people that graduated from New Haven would be very proud. If the money isn't there, because people are struggling right now, we need to stress service. I know New Haven could use help with the festival, it probably could use help. As far as the township ourselves, we've given to yours business, we support your business, and we support the businesses in New Haven when we can and as much as we can. But there is a right way and a wrong way to have given money, and that's what we need to do, we need to always do the right thing.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No other public comment?
The motion will adjourn at nine thirty.
Motion by Treasurer Anbacher. Supported by Clerk Keith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.